Thank you.
Okay, got it. Yes. Okay, and the first case is 2210 Wilson 170 Route 6 State Highway, Map 47 Parcel 39 Application for Special Permit Under Wealthy Zoning Bylaw 6.1.1 in Massachusetts General Law 40 AS6 to Alter the Location of Use but Not Extend a Pre-existing Nonconforming Restaurant Use by Permitting a Kitchen Trailer on Site. Alternatively, the applicant requests a special permit under Wealthy zoning by law 6.1 to allow expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming accessory restaurant use for the pre-existing nonconforming motel use. And the board for this case will be myself Mick, Will, Trevor, and Jan. And Ms. Rose, I believe you're gonna begin the presentation?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Marion Rose. I live in Wealthy and I work at Singer &amp; Singer in Dennisport. I represent Ted Wilson, who's the trustee of the Wilson Family Nominee Trust, who owns and operates Wealthy Motel at 170 Route 6 in South Wealthy. I'd like to thank all of y'all for being here, especially Christine Bates. There are many moving parts to this application and she was a great help. Last week, I submitted a summary which outlines Ted's request and the reasons why we believe that granting the request is within the board's discretion. And at this time, I'd like to provide you all with some background and then really dig into why this is not an application for a food truck in a residential district. And it is a request for a special permit, if needed, to expand the pre-existing nonconforming restaurant use allowed, we believe, by Wealthy zoning by law 6.1.1. Ted's family operated, has operated the motel at 170 Route 6 for nearly 30 years. Ted's with me along with his wife Jess. We're having a little bit of trouble logging into two computers, so we will do some of that as we go along. If Ted would like, you know, it has information that you all would like. The property is in the R2 District and the primary uses are motel and restaurant use, which were recognized by a special permit back in 1981. The reason we're here sort of starts back two years ago at the beginning of COVID when Ted installed a tent in the front lawn of the property to accommodate diners who wanted to eat outside and be spaced per the guidelines then. The tent is still in use for the same reasons. And at this point, the tent Ted has applied for both the fire department and the building permitting and all of that is under review at this time for the present season. The diners can opt to eat indoors or outdoors. And there's a 50-seat at one time max at any time. Over the past two years, Ted's realized that serving inside and outside diners, it's awkward and it has caused some problems. Servers have to navigate hallways, stairs, and exterior door to serve the diners outside. There's no direct means to serve the outdoor diners and the kitchen. And I know you all were there, I believe, or some of you were there.
We were all there at eight o'clock, 8:15 in the morning.
I'm so sorry. I missed you. I was inside and I think you all were outside.
We were.
The trailer. We missed you.
The aroma was amazing.
Yeah, so yeah, we were tempted by breakfast, but we didn't come in.
Well, that's the thing. So you saw the door to the kitchen. The kitchen's tiny. It's a 10 by 15 kitchen. It's about as old as the building. It's been kept up well, but it's a tight space. I don't know if you got so close to see that there are three or four people inside that kitchen. And that kitchen is serving both the indoor and the outdoor areas. It's primarily, the restaurant's primarily for breakfast. And that's another added sort of pressure because, you know, people want their homemade hash. People want their pancakes, their coffee really quickly. And it would be more efficient if we could turn, if the business could turn around the tables more quickly. It's very difficult to do that when the 50 diners are spread between the indoor and outdoor spaces. In response to these problems, Ted secured a kitchen trailer. I think you all have photographs of the trailer. He's hoping to use it as an auxiliary kitchen space to cook closer to the servers who are serving the outdoor diners. It would not be a walk-up service. People outdoors would be served by waitstaff just as the indoors, but the food would be prepared in the kitchen trailer. It's not an expansion of the 50-seat total. The goal is simply to provide hotter food with more coffee refills in less time. As an aside, it's sort of interesting that Ted would probably would go through the process, but the property itself allows most likely for an expansion of a permanent kitchen. The property's 10 acres. The lot coverage right now is right around 3%, 3.1%. And the main building as well within the building envelope. But the reason why the kitchen trailer is important here is that it's the best fit for these particular circumstances. It's not a certainty that the town will continue to allow seasonal outdoor dining under a tent for the long term. And the kitchen trailer provides relief for the immediate and the acute need for the food preparation closer to the intended dining. But it, but this need is not necessarily permanent. The town of Wealthy provides a permitting process for food trucks who operate in the R2 District on public roads and other defined areas through the select board review. The Wealthy zoning by law does not allow food trucks in the R2 District to operate on private property unless it's for a limited period of time. That's another one of the exceptions. The applicant Ted applied for a permit under the select word process in February of this year. And he received notice from the building commissioner that the intent to use the truck on the motel private property would be in violation of the current R2 District use zoning, absent other information. But here we believe that there is an exception that should, this property is unique and different to any other property in this section of the R2 District. The reason being, there's a pre-existing nonconforming use, which is the motel restaurant use. And under 6.2, 6.1.1 alteration or extension of use, although there's no addition or increase in the extent of a nonconforming use of a structural land can be made unless the board grants an appeal for a special permit for the expansion of, and one of the exceptions is a motel. And I think that we would, we would argue that the restaurant use is an accessory used to the motel use because they've been used hand in hand for the last 30 years. Here, the restaurant use, although it is public, it is primarily for the guests at the motel. That's how it's used in practice. We have two arguments. The first is that there's no special permit is required because arguably, there's no addition or increase in the restaurant use because even if the food preparation uses being split between two kitchens, the number of seats is the same throughout. It's 50 seats. They're preparing for 50 seats. They're not preparing more than that at any one time. However, if you think of the expansion by adding the kitchen, the accessory kitchen, the kitchen trailer will be an expansion of the restaurant use, we'd argue that the special permit under 6.1.1 would allow that use for the following reasons. The use is suitable in this property, given that the use is existing and auxiliary location food preparation. You said the kitchen trailer would be well screened by plantings, the tent, and the main building, and is of substantial distance from the abutters. The roads, drainage, and public services related to the use of the kitchen trailer are adequate, would not be taxed by the relocation of the food preparation area. Both the deliveries and waste removal remain unchanged. The proposed location of the kitchen trailer adjacent to the main building is in a developed area, which is not environmentally sensitive. There's no natural vegetation or habitat disturbance as anticipated. The kitchen trailer will aid in the increased quality and timeliness of the service and will be in that way indirectly contributing to the diversity of services of the community and could possibly contribute towards extension of the foods, the seasonal food service on the property. The location of the kitchen trailer will not impact scenic views from public ways, parking, or public access to the shoreline. The kitchen trailer, if approved, even with the condition to return in a year, for example, for review by the board, would provide needed means for a local business to assess the need for a new, more permanent kitchen. And finally, permitting the kitchen trailer in the R2 zoning district of this property with its unique pre-existing motel and accessory restaurant use is in keeping with the intent, intent of the Wealthy zoning by law and will not provide a means for more generalized food truck service, which is not allowed by the Wealthy zoning by law in this district. I want to, for these reasons, we'd ask that a special permit either be determined not to be needed or to be granted under the reasons. I do want to say that we've gotten recently seven letters of support from abutters. Four of those, we just got this today from Christine. If you don't have them, I'd be happy to read them into the record. But we do have those. We're open to any questions you might have.
We have three of those letters. We have Hire and Woodman and Tanya Felix. We don't have the others. So I can, you know, you can certainly read those into the record.
They're much briefer than those, but.
Okay, and but just make sure that Chris has them for the record and for the minutes. But you could go ahead and read those now.
Certainly, these were emailed letters of support. And I sent them at 2:27. So it was later in the day.
Yeah.
From Roland Blair, R O L A N D Blair, B L A I R. Dear Ted, I recently received notice of your application for a special permit for the use of the trailer as an auxiliary kitchen motel from the town. I frequent your restaurant frequently and for breakfast and can't help but notice how small your kitchen is. Your use of a kitchen trailer would better serve customers. Your customer base goes beyond arrest motel guests and include many residential neighbors. I see it as a benefit to the most distant neighborhoods of Wealthy, providing an opportunity to create a sense of community. I very much appreciate your plans. Thank you, Roland Blair. The second of these is from James and Lori Day of 118 Springbrook Road, Wealthy. As the abutter, I am ready to support Ted's application for a special permit. I read the documents provided, read the documents provided by Christine Bates and find no issues that would affect the area. We wish Ted and his business much success. As the last few years have been hard on everyone. Looking forward to patronizing his lovely restaurant and creative menu. Third, this is an email from Richard Murphy. And he lives at 96 Springbrook Road. Hello, my name is Richard Murphy. My wife and I have lived in this residence since June 1978. The Wilsons have always run a first-class business. We are aware of the ZBA application for a special permit and are in support of the application for the special permit at 170 Route 6 in Wealthy. And finally, I guess this is number seven, from Pontius, who lives at 170 Pinewood Circle. To whom it may concern, I bet you Pontius of 170 Pinewood Circle. I'm aware that an application for a special permit has been submitted by Ted Wilson of the Wealthy Lodge for use of a kitchen, a food trailer as an accessory kitchen. I'm ready to express my full support for this application. I feel that we need to broaden our definition of acceptable use of food trailers in order to support innovative businesses, ideas, and solutions for our local economy. Thank you for your time and consideration of this important matter. That's you, Pontius.
Okay, thank you. And I don't think we have anyone in the audience, since we have 11 people, and I can account for all of them. I don't think there's anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this. However, I can read you the other three letters before we go to questions from the board. This first one is from Jeffrey and Denise Hire. My wife and I are writing in full support of the Wilson application for a special permit to provide a kitchen trailer on their site. We have been longtime abutters of Ted Wilson's family's property on 170 Route 6. Our property is locating it at Map 47 Parcel 35. We have lived there since 1992. The Wilson family and its motel and lodge, plus Harrigan's, are great neighbors. We can personally attest to their commitment to the community with regards to their businesses and employment practices. Almost two decades ago, I Jeff worked for the Wilson family at their front desk. And my wife and I have known many of their seasonal employees over the years. They have always run a good business and treat their employees well. We are in favor of allowing the trailer so that their kitchen operation can improve its efficiency and provide better customer service. This in turn will better support an already well-established business, provide jobs, and allow Wealthy to remain a desired tourist destination. Second one is shorter. It's from Sean Woodman, 99 Springbrook Road. My name is Sean Woodman of 99 Springbrook Road, Wealthy. I am aware of a ZBA application for a special permit by the Wealthy Lodge for a food trailer on the premises. I am in support of this application and wish them the best for busy summer season. And the third one is from Tanya Felix. My name is Tanya Felix. I live at 55 Old Bay Road in South Wealthy. I'm aware of the CB application, CBA application for a special permit for an accessory food trailer at the Wealthy Lodge 170 US6 South Wealthy. I'm in full support of the request for the accessory food trailer to be used at the Wealthy Lodge. Mr. Wilson runs a wonderful establishment and is an active member of the business community. He keeps his property and buildings in immaculate shape. I don't see that the use of a food trailer will be of any detriment in any way. It will be a great asset to him for this season. Once again, I fully support this application. Tanya Felix. I do have to say, though, that Tanya Felix is the former owner of this particular food trailer.
That is correct.
So that is, you know, something we do have to remember.
She is also a neighbor in Pinewood Circle.
Right, yes. Okay, I'm gonna go to the board then for questions. I believe I will start with Trevor.
Um, yeah, I don't think, I don't have any questions. I think, I, I think we, I would be in favor of this if we had, if we have a mechanism to, to, to approve it. And I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure if we do or not, but I don't, I don't see any, any issue with the proposal.
Thank you. Mick?
I don't have any questions, but I do think I may have a mechanism that may work after everybody else has their questions.
Okay, all right. Jan?
I have comments related, but I do have one question. You described the, the journey that the waitstaff has to take. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, to get food from the kitchen to the outdoor tables. Can you tell me how that differs from the journey to the cafe, from the kitchen to the cafe?
Absolutely. Actually, I can let Ted speak for this because I've seen it, but he lives it.
Yeah, the location from the indoor dining room is, it's right around the corner. It's only maybe three or five steps to get into the dining room. The distance from the kitchen to the outdoor tent is, it could be like closer to 25 steps along going through a hallway and a staircase.
Also opening an exterior door.
So it differs quite a bit from serving the cafe.
Yes.
I definitely have some comments sharing later.
Okay, okay. I'll go around to Al for questions.
So as far as your question about the distance, it really impacts. We don't have line of sight vision from the outdoor tent to the indoor dining room to the kitchen. It's required, it requires us to have more staff on the floor to service our customers, to give them good service. If we were able to have the food trailer and service, it's so much closer to where we want to be bringing the food for the tent. People love eating outside with COVID. It was, it was awesome that the town made it so easy for us to put up tents. People felt safe. It was just a great thing. And we're just trying to take that and make it more efficient and improve it.
Thank you.
Al?
The only question I have is whether we, this addition is basically a wheeled vehicle. And as I understand it, the zoning board does not have jurisdiction over wheeled vehicles. So if, if the thing is, if the wheels are removed and it's put on blocks, I think it's a great idea and I have absolutely no objections.
Thanks.
So I was just gonna say, that's an interesting question because to be honest with you, no in town knows how to deal with this, what I'm trying to do. I presented to the zoning inspector back over the winter. And he said, well, you have two options. You can either fill out the food truck application or go through ZBA. He didn't say anything about, you know, that's all he said. And so I went through the food truck application. Of course, James was in and out. He had some things going on. And Victor was the interim building inspector. And he was confused also. He actually, he sent an email and he said, James, we have a conundrum. We have a food truck app, you have food truck regulations that conflict with the zoning regulations. So everybody's been confused. What I'm trying to do is use this trailer as an accessory kitchen. It looks like a food truck, but it's not going to be operated as a food truck. So there is no definition for what I'm trying to do.
But we do believe the use is included in what could be expanded in a special permit under 6.1.1.
Okay, well.
Yeah, one question. The, we were supplied a photograph or three of the, of the unit this afternoon. And your kitchen trailer looks a lot like the lunch truck that occupied the end of the pier.
That's what it is.
And I know I ran into Ben and his daughter there. So is it the same unit?
It is the same unit, but it is operating in a different way. It's operating as accessory, it's an accessory auxiliary kitchen to its food preparation for a pre-existing nonconforming restaurant use. So it is a different animal, even though it's the same.
It's the same trailer, but it's being operated completely different.
I know. I, I'm sympathetic to your plight. I, I look forward to hearing from Mick when a true question to you. I would like to find a way to vote for you, but I don't see it now.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to clarify something. The zoning board does have jurisdiction over wheeled food trucks and wheeled food vehicles, but only where they're allowed by special permit, which is the central district and the commercial district. They're not permitted anywhere else.
Right.
And the zoning board has regulations for the licensing, the licensing of food service.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's right. But unfortunately, this is the wrong district for us to have any of that jurisdiction. Andy?
Yeah, I echo all of my other, my fellow members' concerns and questions. I'm not exactly sure what we can do here. But I do have a question for you, Mr. Wilson. And that is, you've had the tent up for how long now?
Well, this is gonna be the second, the second season.
And do you intend to continue to operate the tent in the future?
If, if the fire department in the town allows it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do have just another comment too. So the, the building inspector denied my application for the food truck. And he called it a fixed trailer. So there is no definition for a fixed trailer in the food truck regulations or in zoning. If, I mean, if it's, what's, if it's, if it's mobile, it has wheels, but if it's fixed, it still has wheels, but it's stationary. It's not moving anywhere.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all in the position of being sympathetic with what you want to do and trying to figure out if we even have a jurisdiction to do that, or how we could go about doing that. And I appreciate Ms. Rose's explanations because she is trying to explain how we might be able to do that. But Nick, you had an idea?
I did. I'm a gearhead. I'm all about internal combustion engines. So a food truck is a mobile vehicle that drives itself. This is a trailer. So if we're going to split hairs within the bylaw and staying within the, the spirit of the bylaw, there's nobody has a problem with what the people are trying to do at the motel. And I really think that we can find a way to say that this is not a mobile food truck. It is a trailer. It doesn't have an engine. It doesn't drive itself. Now, if we want to, it could go on four concrete blocks on either end of that trailer. And the wheels are off the ground. It is no longer a mobile vehicle. It is an accessory unit accessory to the kitchen. And I believe that we can do that and stay within the spirit of the bylaw. The food truck bylaws a disaster. It has been from what happened in the previous cases. So I understand we need to be careful, but I really believe that it's not a food truck. And what the people at the motel are trying to do, it's obviously not a food truck. It's not getting moved. It's going to be there for the season, probably at the end of the season, when the winter's over, stick the wheels back on and tow it into a garage for the winter. And there you go. That's how I would find a way of getting around calling it a food truck. And I think then we, as the permitting authority, can grant a special permit for the accessory unit. So I don't know what, it'd be interesting to see what my fellow members say, but that's how I, that's how I see it. It is splitting hairs, but it's a trailer, not a food truck.
If I could comment. I, the first, the primary thing that I'd like to say is that if, if need be, we could take the wheels off of the food trailer. I do believe, and I, I just want to be up that under your bylaw, this food trailer is also included. It's either, it, it has to be movable. That's the key. And so taking the wheels off would make it not movable. But it does include a non-motorized trailer. So I don't want to sneak by with that because that, that's, that's not accurate. But we certainly would take off the wheels if that would help us, help everyone find a way to yes on this.
And, and it does not have any, is it a trailer or is it a truck? Does it drive itself?
It is a trailer. It does not drive itself.
I thought that was the case, but I wanted to make sure. Okay. And Jan, you had a comment.
I'd like to find a way to do this too, but our definition is a readily movable, non-motorized trailer or cart or a motorized vehicle. It's any of those things. And whether you take the wheels off or not, it fits in our definition, I think, of a food truck. I think, I personally think the only way we can do this is one, one of I think, I personally think the only way we can do this is one, one of Attorney Rose's arguments, which is to consider it under six point one point one.
And say.
And I'm.
Okay. And under six point one point one as an increase in use?
Concerned about allowing this without, without a special permit. Concerned about letting a genie out of a bottle. This was a much, I was on the planning board when this bylaw was drafted. It was a much debated and talked about issue. And I have a concern that other motels or restaurants that are not in the commercial district or the central district might see this as a way to get a food truck when it's not allowed in that area.
So you're saying, and just so that I can clarify, you're saying that you would be uncomfortable with it without a special permit?
Absolutely. And I, I would want to condition it that they would come back in, in a, in a year. In my opinion.
Andy had a sound up there for.
Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to hear what Andy has to say.
I, I also was on the planning board when the food truck bylaw was drafted. I disagree with Jan. In terms of what the definition says and what we, what I believe the intent was. Only insofar as this thing being rendered non-movable. As it exists right now, I would agree with Jan. It's a movable trailer.
If I could add, I'm going to, if, if this were approved under a special permit under six point one point one, the only, the only uses that are allowed that the board has the discretion to increase or expand are the uses of different entities like campgrounds, mobile home parks and motels. And so in this case, in this district, if you granted a special permit under six point one point one, there are, I, I went through the district and took a look at what other businesses are there. There's not another, there's not another hotel with a restaurant in this district. The even tide is in the commercial district. There are two restaurants that block and tackle and what's the one across the street? But those are not connected to motels. There's not a pre-existing non-conforming use that's connected. And so it wouldn't be a case where you'd be opening the genie's bottle if you granted a special permit here for the two motels in this district to also start, you know, putting food trucks in in addition. There, there would be no.
Thank you. All right, Will.
Attorney Rose, would you be willing to stipulate that your kitchen trailer would at all times serve food to your dining room located within the building?
I think that the, that would be difficult because the, the diners are, are seating out, are sitting outside. And the whole point of having the kitchen trailer outside is to be closer to those diners who prefer to eat on the picnic tables.
So if I came into the dining room, wanted to eat it inside for whatever crazy reason, you couldn't serve me, you wouldn't serve me from the food truck?
Not from the food truck. We would be serving you from the inside kitchen.
I'm, I'm trying to give you out.
Okay.
Trying to give you out. You're not taking it. You're not taking it.
I guess we could.
The reason why I'm saying this is I worry that if we just really nearly grant you the relief you've asked for, then anyone could go set up a food truck, put it up on blocks, have a, have some tables out there, have a waitress that comes and goes. No one, no customer goes up to your food truck, no customer to order, not yours, but. No, no food is delivered to the customer. Go by a waitress. That could be argued, people could come in after we approve what you did and said, you know, you, 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 you did it for Mr. Wilson. You should do it for me. But if we, but if we put a proviso on, the only way we're going to approve it is that food truck also has to serve an existing dining room within a structure. Then there's going to be very, very few people that ever come by and say, gee, you, you did it for them. I say, okay, build a hotel and a, and, and a restaurant, we'll do it for you.
That sounds like a good idea.
But then you'd have the opposite problem.
So will you be willing to stipulate that if I go to the dining room, you'll serve me from the food kitchen?
Certainly.
Couldn't make any sense, Will, then. You'd have people having to do the exact walk.
Avenue for us to approve this. Or at least say it's not a food truck. And I think, I think that a food truck by definition is, is, is serving people that are basically on the street or at, or at a table, or they take it in their car and they go away with it. But there are very few food, this is not what I think the draft is meant by a food truck in terms of, of the operation. And when, when you first started to talk about operation, I said, well, it doesn't talk about operation. But then I, I, if you look at the, the, the substance, that's, I think what, what they're talking about is they were worried about someone just setting up shop, not associated with any structure. And that makes what you're doing a very different animal.
But the, also in the definition of food truck, it says readily movable. And I don't think a, a trailer on blocks is readily movable.
No, that, I, I agreed to share.
I think, you know, you could, I think if you, if you put a trailer on blocks, you can say it's not readily movable and therefore it is not a truck. A truck by definition is one that sort of flits in and out, you know, causing traffic and whatever. I don't, that's just my sense of what the food truck bylaw was trying to, to, to cope with, not, not somebody expanding their kitchen. Trevor?
Well, I think, I mean, I think Will's right. I think the only thing that makes this work is the fact that there is an existing restaurant use there already.
Right.
And I, you know, we obviously wouldn't be looking at it the same way if, if it was another motel that didn't have a restaurant use that was then coming in and trying to do this, so.
And it's still proposed to serve the same fifty diners at any one time.
Correct. And if you all were out, I mean, you saw that the, the picnic tables, I mean, it's not crammed in there. It's, they're not, they're not trying to double the seating or anything like that. It's literally, some people are outside, some people are inside, and it, it changes over the season as to which one's preferable. And, you know, public health.
Chairperson?
Yes.
The other thing too about this that I was thinking about is we're still on the back end of a pandemic and people are very uncomfortable in crowded spaces. And hopefully that will change down the road where we don't have a need for this. But I really feel that this isn't a economic necessity for this business to survive because we've seen a lot of businesses that have gone out of business because of this pandemic. And if we can call it, it's not a trailer or if it's on blocks and if that's staying, as Will says, you can have your food from that trailer into the restaurant. And if it stays within the spirit of the bylaw, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to give relief for this particular use. So, and then hopefully there's going to day come when you won't need to do this. But, you know, it's not happening anytime soon from what we're looking at out there. And if we need, if we make our guests into Wellfleet more comfortable by sitting outside, well, we should try and find a way to do it. That's how I feel about it.
Are you ready to go to findings?
I will make a motion to go to findings.
All right. I would like a second. Trevor will second. I'm gonna, I had this written in two ways as not, as not needing it and as needing it. So I think I'm reading the one that is, they need a special permit. This is an application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw six point one to allow the expansion of a pre-existing accessory restaurant use for the pre-existing non-conforming motel use. A lot is in the R two district. The use is lawfully pre-existing non-conforming, having been granted the special permit on December seventeenth nineteen eighty-one by the Wellfleet zoning board of appeals. The applicant wishes to place a food trailer adjacent to the tent area on the property to serve diners who choose to eat in the tent. There will be no intrusion into the setbacks and the addition of the trailer would not exceed building coverage limitations. Six point one three existing, I mean, three point one, three point one percent existing, three point five percent proposed where fifteen percent is allowed. There will be no increase in use as the applicant does not propose to add additional dining space. The current capacity of fifty seats will remain. Food trucks are not allowed on private property in the R two district except for a limited twenty-four hour period. The food trailer, while meeting many aspects of the definition of food truck under the Wellfleet zoning bylaw, is proposed to be permanent and not readily movable. Further, food will not be sold from the trailer but sold in the restaurant and prepared in the trailer. There were seven appearance, seven letters in support of the application. There were no appearances or correspondence in opposition to the application. The roads, drainage and other public services are adequate for the project. The use contributes to the diversity of services available. After consideration, considering the district objectives for the zoning district as provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaw three point two and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point two, the board finds that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. The board has found that pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point two point three, the scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerably treated. Reasonable efforts have been made to minimize the visibility of parking and service areas from public streets at traditional public access to or along the shoreline beaches has been maintained. After considering the district objectives for the zoning district as provided for in the Wellfleet zoning bylaw bylaw three point two and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point two, the board finds that the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. I think that's it. I'm sorry, I don't need that last one because that's, that was if we were going to deny it. So never mind, avoid that last one. And I think there's a thought that we would maybe want to condition this, but I have questions about the findings first. Jan?
First, the easy one. In number seven says, the food trailer, while meeting many aspects of the definition of food truck under the Wellfleet zoning bylaws, proposed to be permanent. I don't like that word. That implies it's going to, to me, it implies it's going to stay there forever. So how about if we say, just take it out, is proposed to be not readily movable?
Or stationary? Stationary and not readily?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I think we need to do something along the lines of what Will said. I'm not sure how to.
Yeah, I, I have a, a proposed addition.
Will, can I just finish my other one?
Okay, finish the other one then. Yes, of course.
Okay. Number five, it says there's no, there will be no increase in use. But this is an applicant, we're giving it a special permit if we vote to do this to allow the expansion of a pre-existing accessory restaurant use. So we're saying the restaurant use is expanding.
But there'll be no increase in use. How do we do that? Yes.
Would that be the amount of people that you serve are still staying constant at fifty?
Yeah, but, but we are expanding the.
The food preparation area.
Expansion of a pre-existing restaurant use by expanding the food preparation area?
With, with an auxiliary kitchen.
With an auxiliary kitchen.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done. Go ahead, Will. Except for a condition.
I would prefer not to make it a condition and put it in our, we can make it a condition. But I think there needs to be something in our findings that, that, that points to this particular case. So I'm proposing language such as the applicant has agreed that the food truck will provide meals to the applicant's dining room located within the permanent structure.
At the discretion of the owner, at the, you know, discretion.
Well, no, well, no, because then, no, it's got to be, they have to provide food in the dining room. Otherwise, it'd be like any other food truck that wants to go anywhere, you know, at, is at the discretion, oh, at the discretion of the diner.
You, you have an auxiliary kitchen, so at the discretion of the chef or the cook or, you know, whatever, whoever's in charge, people outside can be served or inside if at the discretion of the chef, that's the way it should be.
What if, what if we just, let, let me try, let me try this language.
Of the, the chef. It defeats the whole purpose of the, of my, of my, my addition.
Will, let me try this wording. The applicant has agreed that the food truck, the food trailer, not truck, please don't call it a truck. The food trailer will provide meals to the dining room as well as to the customers in the tent.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good with that.
Customers in the dining room as well as customers in the tent.
Maybe call it the existing dining room.
Ah, yeah, okay. And the, of course, it's an existing tent, the dining room as well as in the existing tent.
You know, Sharon, can I make another, another comment? The document that you read from, but I, I think it's, it's, it's a, it's a poor argument to say that if you take the wheels off, it's not, it's not mobile. I don't, I think that's intellectually dishonest.
I didn't put that in the, in the, that's not in there. There's nothing in there about the wheels. All it says is the food trailer, while meeting many aspects of the definition of the food truck, is proposed to be stationary and not readily movable. I didn't say.
In this case, no, that's true. I, I stand corrected.
Okay, I didn't say anything about wheels. I'm not a wheels kind of person. Okay. Do we need, so we don't need to add anything about taking the wheels off?
No, you know, my error, you know.
Okay, all right. I won't add anything about, so do we, and that extra condition there, seven A was the applicant has agreed that the food trailer will provide meals to the existing dining room, the customers in the existing dining room as well as to customers in the tent.
That's not my condition though.
No, that's not your condition. That was just, that's in the findings. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We gotta get through the findings.
You said condition. You meant findings.
I meant findings, absolutely. Yeah, that was, that was seven A in the, in the findings. And then we, then we are, so do we, we're not changing anything in the findings. We have to vote on the findings before we can condition anything. I think.
I'll move the findings.
Move the findings. I need a second. Ah, in favor, Will? Nick?
Hi.
Trevor?
Hi.
Jan?
I.
And myself, I. Okay, now you're can, we're moving to grant the permit based on the following condition.
There you go.
I can't find the wording, but it came from Attorney Rose and it had to do with the applicant coming back in a year. I can't, I, I'm skimming and I can't find it.
Believe Attorney Rose can find anything. I have great faith in Attorney Rose.
Six, in my summary, I said, the kitchen trailer is going to approve with a condition to return in one year for review by the board.
Okay, all right. That will, it's number six.
By review by the board, my, my meaning would be that we could rescind the permit if we said, you know, for whatever, for whatever reason. Is that what this means?
Well, you can't reverse it. Well, you can't reverse it for any reason.
I don't know. I understand that.
Rational basis.
Right. But when you, that's the point of the review, right?
The point of the review is to see if this is working and if it's not working to change it.
Right, okay.
Just a point of clarification. What would the mechanics of that review be?
We gotta go through the whole rigmarole again and then we'll, we'll discuss it and figure it out.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, at the end of, like, next spring, after you've had a year of doing this and seeing how it works, you file an application to, you know, I don't know what it's, it wouldn't be a special permit. It would be an application for a review of, of your current special permit.
Okay.
And, and and then by that time, you'd have a whole year of experience to know. And I think, I believe Mr. Wilson is thinking about whether or not he wants to expand the kitchen in general. So you may be in a position to talk about that at that point.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
My point would be that, let's pretend there's, there's no more COVID pandemic. There's no monkeypox pandemic. I just don't want to see this trailer become a permanent auxiliary kitchen. That's my whole point.
Okay, yeah.
Is there any way to possibly limit this, the special permit for a particular timeframe?
I don't think so, but the condition to return in one year.
Trevor has his handle.
No. Year for review and review of the permit. That's all, and it's conditions.
I mean, that, just Jen, that, that's a difficult, remember, we had to sort of the, the same issue in a, in a different way with, with the, the Main Street pot shop.
Yeah.
Where we said, oh, they're gonna bring back their numbers to us and this and that. And without some cry, cry, I mean, I'm okay with your, your, your request, but it does have some practical implications of, because they were not really, we're, we're, we're here to, to, to review applications. So it's sort of an odd request, but I, I, I understand why you're doing it, but it's, it's a bit unwieldy.
How else would you do it to make sure that doesn't become a permanent fixture?
Right. Attorney Rose.
Possibly the building commission, could it, could it go before the building commissioner? So that, you know, if there were complaints about it or if there were particular issues, that, that would be a way, and if it needed to be referred to the board at that time, but it would, if we did that and not force the applicant to go straight to the zoning board, you know, the cost of this would not be a yearly cost.
Right.
If, if there's a way to do that.
That actually makes a lot of sense. You know, the condition that you have, you let the building, building commissioner review this in a year and determine whether or not it needs to come back before the board.
Yeah. I mean, what is the story with the tent? How does that work? Did you have, have to get a permit for that? I, I just don't know how, how, how that came to be.
It's also a pro, work in progress. The fire department requires a permit. The building department, department requires a permit. They're trying to fine tune that for next year so that one department handles it. And it's gonna be, well, I, I don't know what's gonna, I, I think it's gonna be building department. It was a whole, it was a little confusing there because the, I paid the permit fee to the fire department. And then Derry in the building department was talking about collecting a fee. And then Teresa and Derry talked together and she said, well, you already, you already paid the fee once, so you don't have to pay twice. They're trying to streamline that whole process.
I mean, Jan, i- 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 is your concern that, that what could happen here is that we'd have a, a permanent tent and a permanent food truck? And if, if that were the case, wouldn't that, I'm asking the board and to attorney Rose, wouldn't, wouldn't that necessitate filing for a special, a special permit for the expansion of a non-conforming use?
We don't usually time limit ours, so we don't usually have an extension of a non-conforming use. The tent thing is, is because it was added by, the outdoor dining was all added by COVID, but that was not a zoning board issue. That was, I don't know, fire, building, I, you know, select boards, it went somewhere. I mean, I appreciate Mr. Wilson's attempt to work through the craziness of the departments.
And the findings do allow them to serve in the dining hall. So even if the tent disappeared, dining room, even if the tent disappears, I just would hate to see a permanent.
No, I, I, no, I get.
You need a bigger kitchen. I, I would hope you would build a bigger kitchen as opposed to a permanent trailer.
I understand.
Trevor's been trying to say something for about an hour now.
Yeah, now, come, come back in, Trevor.
Should we have an additional condition that if the tent is removed at any point, that the trailer needs to go as well? I mean, if, if the purpose of the trailer is ostensibly to serve the tent, then if the tent is removed, the trailer would cease to serve any purpose.
Right.
Based on the argument of the applicant. So I, I think maybe a condition that link to.
And, and Jan, i- if we put in that condition, would you consider withdrawing yours?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that, that's a much.
Yeah, much cleaner. That's a much simpler one. Yeah.
Nicely done, Trevor.
Yeah.
I'm trying to say that for now.
Yeah. About that, Trevor.
You need to butt in.
Every once in a while, you know, your trouble is you, you mute yourself in between, so you can't butt in. It's not good.
I mute myself because I have screaming kids and barking dogs.
I know that, but it's quite all right. We'll have to listen to that. So the condition is if the tent is removed at some future time, the trailer would also be removed.
That would be a, a permanent removal, not if, if a hurricane is company, coming.
Right, exactly.
Permanently removed.
Is permanently removed, permanently removed, yes.
Removed and not the wind.
Not the wind, permanently removed, by your choice, not by the wind. Although you have to take those tents down if you get certain amount of wind. Yeah. If the tent were, is at some time permanently removed, the, the trailer would also be removed.
Should we say the tent and outdoor dining?
Well.
No, I don't, I don't.
Somebody's gonna, we're not gonna control whether somebody sits on the grass.
Okay.
That's too much.
But this eliminates the need for reporting back to us.
Yes, it does. It does. It eliminates the need for reporting back for us, to us.
Perfect.
All right. So with that condition, I need a motion to approve the findings.
I will make a motion to approve the findings.
And I need a second.
Second.
Jan seconds. All in favor? Go back to my list, which is over here. Mick?
Hi.
Will?
Hi.
Trevor?
Hi.
Jan?
Hi.
And Sharon?
Hi.
All right, we made it through that. I was, I enjoyed reading your first zoning board appeal because the engineer was Will Joy, who was a dear friend of mine. And so it was nice to revisit Will's work.
We need to have a motion to grant.
We did. We granted it with a special permit.
We didn't. We just, yeah. To grant the special permit.
Yeah, Mick did and Jan seconded with the condition.
No, we just, I just need a motion to grant.
We did the findings.
No, I thought that once, we did approve the findings already and then you grant the permit with the condition. All right, I need another motion to approve to grant the special permit. And I need a second. I need a second. All right, Trevor seconds. All in favor. Mick?
Hi.
Will?
Hi.
Trevor?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Yes.
That was really interesting.
It was very interesting. Thank you, thank you, attorney Rose. It was a very interesting, and we did come, Mr. Wilson, by the way. You just weren't up early enough.
Yep. They were there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Now, on this next one, Will is gonna, Nick is gonna leave us and tend to his back.
Right, good night, all. Thank you so much.
Good night, good night, good night. And Andy is going to recuse himself, but is probably, will be back for the minutes after. Correct? You're gonna be back later, man, Andy, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is twenty-one eleven Buckley, six eighty Gulf Pond Road map nine parcel six eight, six twenty-six. Applicant seeks a net National Seashore Park special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law C forty A S nine and Wellfleet zoning by law six point one point five, six point two four and eight point four point two to intensify a pre-existing non-conforming NSPFG FA on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, lot area to alter a non, alter a conforming dwelling by constructing a two hundred and twenty-eight square foot addition. And the board of this will be Will, Trevor, me, Al, and Jan.
Are you ready? Are you all ready?
We're ready. We're ready. Ben, did you get that board? Did you get that?
I did, I, yeah, I did, I.
Basically, everybody who's here.
Yeah, the process. It's, again, this is Ben Zander on the line and with me on the line also is Janet Buckley and Jeff Buckley. And it's, it's, it's nice to see you all again. This is an application for alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming structure in the National Seashore as well as for a National Seashore Park district special permit, because that's required anytime that a special permit is required. The house, and I, and I know you all went up to the house and saw it. I went over today. It's a great location. It's a great house and it's, but it's a house that's not readily visible when you're driving up the road just because of the way the elevation changes going up the driveway. The house looks over the road and down to, down to Gulf Pond. And this is the, the Wallace family home. Janet is a Wallace and, and she and her husband Jeff now live in the home. It has a little bit of an unusual history and as you saw from the, the narrative, this is a house that, that actually had an addition put on it in twenty sixteen and never came into this board for a special permit. I don't think there was any mal-intent on anybody's part. I think nobody identified that need, including the building inspector who issued the building permit. So at that time, the house would have been eligible for the same special permit that we're requesting today because as you can see from my narrative, it was, it was a pre-existing non-conforming structure by reason of its National Seashore growth floor area at the time of the adoption of the bylaw in two thousand and eight. The numbers are a little wacky because, you know, and, and some of you, it may have been confusing. It certainly was to me. The way that we calculate the, the growth area under your bylaw calculates basement areas exclusive of, of utility areas. And so there's a, this has a large basement that's not used for habitable space. It's just storage down there, but it throws the numbers way off. So if you count the, the basement area that's storage, you know, we end up with a total gross floor area, total, total, you know, floor area of over five thousand square feet. But in reality, when we count the floor areas that are used in the structure, and it's essentially a single-story structure with a basement, it had, it had, you know, prior to its any changes in twenty sixteen, it had two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight square feet, you know, going back to nineteen fifty-nine. They added a thousand forty-eight square feet in, in two thousand and sixteen. And what they're seeking to do now is to add a small two hundred and twenty-seven square foot addition. It's nineteen by twelve. And it, what it does is it allows them to add a bathroom to the front bedroom so that they have a dedicated bathroom for that front bedroom. So what they're doing is pushing the structure out by about twelve feet. And then, and then adding a bathroom so that there's a, there's a bathroom in the master bedroom. There's, there's a powder room out in the hallway that can be used for guests and for the bedroom across, across the hallway. And then this bedroom, we have a dedicated bedroom. So it doesn't change the intensity of the use of the structure. It doesn't change the number of bedrooms. But it does increase the floor area. It doesn't increase the perceived scale or massing. It, it's not taller than the existing structure. It's still a single-story bedroom. And so I, I think it falls right within that category of alterations of non-conforming structures that would find themselves eligible for a special permit. I think the one wrinkle here that we really need to be cognizant of is that your bylaw provides it as a condition of the grant of a special permit for the National Seashore. You can't exceed one and a half times what was there in nineteen fifty-nine. And the nineteen fifty-nine area was two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight square feet. If we ta, take that as one and a half, we end up with three thousand two hundred and seven square feet. This is actually three thousand four hundred and fourteen on that first floor level. So it's two hundred and seven square feet over that one and a half. But the standard in your bylaw for exceeding the one and a half is, is fairly straightforward. It says the board shall consider the fifty percent use guideline. Proposed developments shall not exceed the fifty percent formula unless the board finds that the development shall not have a significant adverse impact on the scenic views and on the prevailing scale, mass and character of the neighboring and zoning district. And we believe that this particular addition, which is just coming forward towards the road where you can't really see it from the road, doesn't change the scale or the massing of the structure. It certainly doesn't have a significant adverse impact on the scenic views. And there are no scenic views through this property to any other area because it sits at the top of the hill. And so you would actually have to be in, in the Buckley's backyard to, 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 to be blocked by the house. And so it's a, it, it's an addition of convenience for them. As you saw, you were at the house, they're great stewards of the property. They went through the process earlier on to do some permitting. And when they went to build a shed a number of years ago, the seashore came in, reviewed the property and said, look, we want you to remove some encroachments onto the seashore property that had been there historically. They've removed those voluntarily. And, and they, they've just maintained the property beautifully. And so we're hopeful that with all that being said, we can answer any questions that you have and you can see fifty grand the permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ben. And Chris, do we have any letters on this?
No.
Did we hear from the seashore?
No.
Okay.
Three o'clock this afternoon, no.
Yes.
If I may, Sharon, just to, just to inform you, I did, when I filed this application, I electronically filed it with Chris and with the town clerk and I, and I, I copied the application to both Brian Carlstrom and Lauren, and I advised them of the hearing date in that email, you know, when we filed this.
Yeah.
They would know not only that we'd filed it, but also when the hearing date was.
Sure. No, I didn't, I didn't see anything come through. Okay. All right. And I don't think, unless Ms. Buckley wants to say anything. Do you, Ms. Buckley?
Not, not really.
Oh, okay, fine. That's fine. All right. So I will go for questions. So Will?
No, my, my concerns were the size of the building and I had no idea how big the building was, except it didn't look that big. But I thought, thought it was five thousand square feet. I went up there and looked at where, where, where's the five thousand square feet? No, I, I have, we're now, 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 now that I know the scale of, of the size, I, I agree with Ben and there's no significant, I, there's no, there's no adverse impact at all, never mind a significant one.
Okay, Trevor?
Yeah, no, I think it's a reasonable request. I don't see any, any adverse impacts or issues with that. I think we, we need to work through some of the numbers in the findings if we, if we get that far, but I don't have any problem with them.
Al?
I have no problem with it.
Jan?
I have no problem with it. It just, you know, whether we, any of us like it or not, basement area is included. And if we look at that, this is like vastly over what you can have and I don't know. I mean, it's, what they're asking for is minimal, but we just wanting that bylaw.
Is there an option to finish the basement? I mean, at some future date, can, can this basement be turned into three more bedrooms or, you know, whatever?
Theoretically, I mean, the board could certainly condition the grant of the permit that the basement not be finished. There's no real need to finish the basement for, for Jeff and Janet. I, I walked through the house with them. The basement level doesn't have, you know, it doesn't have access to the outside. It's not, it doesn't have windows going into it that I'm aware of. I don't believe it does. It's, it doesn't really lend itself to a nice living area.
Right.
The, the thing is, you know, I have Janet's feeling too, is that, you know, it, it, on paper, this is a big house. When you go out and look at it, it's not a big house. And the, I think some of the intent of the bylaw, we all know, was to avoid seeing McMansions looming over the rest of the neighborhood. And this isn't in that category. I mean, the fact that it's got, you know, a thousand square feet. I mean, the numbers, Ben, are just staggering here. I can't, I finally did figure out where five thousand got to. And, and you'll have to, if we get to the findings, you'll have to, we'll all have to listen very carefully to the numbers and see if we can't get them right. But I don't think this is really, this is the kind of building that the bylaw was intended to avoid. I think this is, this is a, a building that sits on its property in a reasonable way, as some properties do not. So, sort of where I am with it. Yes, Will?
Yeah, and the only other thing, we, we haven't. Yeah, and the only other thing, we, we haven't heard a response from, 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 from Seashore. From what I gathered, they're, they're not shy in, in voicing their objections.
No. We usually hear from the seashore if they're upset.
I checked, I checked my inbox at three forty-five. We, we expected it to come in, and it wasn't there.
I was too.
Yeah.
But, you know.
They were, they were only upset when they made us move the garden. So the Wallace's, their fifteen feet of the garden area that he had put in in the, in the late seventies was on the seashore property that Lauren came up, and so she made us move it. So we had to take, take the whole garden out, bring it back home, and re-landscape the park land, move the whole garden over fifteen feet. Um, so she's familiar with the property for sure. My other point is, I thought if the basement was a mechanical area, which we've got AC, there's pipes, there's an oil tank, there's a boiler, there's a water heater.
Right.
Um, there's all the electrical panels. I thought that that was not inclusive if it was a mechanical um area. I thought I.
Yeah, you're, you're correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Buckley, um what it is, is they, they, they carve out the part that is devoted to those, and that's not included. And the part that is not devoted to those is added into the living space.
I see.
Because I guess, as Al says, you know, technically, you could put another bedroom down there.
Ew.
Why anybody would want to be down there with it?
Yeah, right.
Well, I, I think you have to have egress anyway.
Yeah.
So if there isn't any, if there aren't even any windows, then it's sort of a moot point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I have to say, I think that if there, if, if, if the basement had lent itself a living area, probably would have happened a long time ago. So, um, you know, Jeff and Janet using the house themselves don't really need it, so. Um, but I'm certainly, I've, I've got all the numbers to get different ways, so when you get to finding, I'm happy to help the board with those numbers. So.
All right. Do we have any other comments or questions, or do you want to go to findings? Yes, Jan.
When we do the findings, we, we have to address the National Seashore Park Square Foot. What is it? Gross floor area? I mean, that's what we have to go by. But can we maybe put in the findings that X number of square feet of that is, you know, basement area? Just because it just sounds like a huge house, and, you know, we have to use those figures, but it it doesn't really represent.
Yeah, we, we do. I, we, I think Will did have those in, those numbers in the findings. He separated it out by.
If I did, they were probably wrong.
Well, yeah, but I think you did. I think you did them correctly.
We have a place where, where we can fill in the blanks.
Yeah, we have places where we can fill in the blanks. Yeah. Yeah, it's, the numbers are very complicated for this house. Yeah. Anything else?
Nothing from her.
Okay, if not, I need a motion to go to findings.
I move, we go to findings.
All right, Al moves. I need a second.
I'll second.
Will seconds. All in favor, Al.
Aye.
Uh, Jan.
Aye, uh, yeah, aye.
Aye, um, Will.
Aye.
Trevor.
Aye.
And me, aye. All right, twenty-two eleven Jeffrey D. Buckley and Janet W. Buckley, six eighty Gulf Pond Road Map nine parcel six twenty-six, request for a special permit to permit construction of an addition to an existing structure. The applicants own a single-family residential house situated in the National Seashore Park just NPS District um and propose to construct an addition of two hundred and twenty-seven square feet herein, hereinafter referred to as the addition on the northeast side of the existing structure. Oh, wait, we have to back up one second. One thing I forgot is that the applicant had asked for a waiver of the site, of a new site plan. We have to be willing to accept the waiver of a new site plan. My proposal would be that we can, in this case, accept the site plan as given because there are no setback issues associated with this property. Um, but that's something, to just sort of backtrack a minute and make sure we've, we're willing to go forward without, without that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And, and understanding, and the board does understand that, that the applicant will be required to provide the building inspector with a, with a, with a certified plot plan prior to getting a CO to demonstrate that there are no encroachments.
Right. Right. So, um, so can I back up for a minute? Let's put that on hold and say, can I have a motion to agree to a waiver of the site plan?
I shall move.
And.
Second.
And all in favor, um, Jan.
Aye.
Al.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Trevor.
Aye, but I'm not sure, don't we have a site plan?
We do, but the problem is the newest addition is drawn in by the architect, not certified by the, by the engineer.
That's, that should be okay anyway.
Yeah, it should be. Um, I know, architects are good. And the I, but um, yeah, it should be fine, but that was in the application. Okay. Back to the findings then. Um, the, well, the structure is situated a pre-existing non-conforming lot containing seventy-seven thousand three hundred square feet under Wealthy Zoning Bylaw five point four point one. The minimum lot size in the NSP District is three acres. All right, that's, we're numbers, okay. We're getting back to more numbers now. Under Wealthy Zoning, uh for Wealthy Bylaws, Zoning Bylaw Section five point three point one, lots with lot areas between forty thousand one square feet and uh third eighty-four thousand square feet are allowed a maximum NSPGFA of twenty-five thousand feet plus one point four three percent of the lot over forty-two thousand square, square feet. The lot under consideration contains seventy-seven thousand three hundred square feet, and thus the maximum allowable NSPGFA for the property as a whole is three hundred and five square feet. Under section four point three point one footnote twenty-eight, the maximum area of the dwelling, of a dwelling is twenty-eight hundred square feet. At the time of the adoption of the bylaw in two thousand and eight, the NSPGFA was four thousand six hundred, four thousand sixty-seven square feet, two thousand one hundred and thirty square feet of living area on the first floor and one thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine square feet on the basement floor. In twenty sixteen, two additions were made to the structure, adding one thousand forty-eight square feet. While these additions were made pursuant to building permit, the applicants and apparently the then-building inspector were unaware that a special permit should have been requested as the allowable square footage of structures under Wealthy Bylaw five point four point three point one was exceeded. The existing structure currently contains five thousand one hundred and fifteen square feet and is therefore non-conforming in that it exceeds the allowable square footage permitted in the NSP District. In the event that the applicants are permitted to make the requested improvements, the NSPGFA of the dwelling would be five thousand three hundred and forty-two square feet. There were no appearances or court and correspondence in support of or in opposition to the um app, application. The applicable provisions for this application under wealth, under the Town of Wealthy Zoning Bylaws are section five point four point one, section six point one point five point one B, and section six point two four, and sections eight point four point two. Section six point one point five point one B, the board finds that the construction of the additional living space is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Section eleven, section eight point four point two, the board finds that the benefits derived from the construction of the living space outweigh any adverse effects from said construction. Section eight point four point two point one, the board finds that the construction of the additional living space is suitable and that it is compatible with nearby land uses, which would not be damaged by the construction of the additional living space. B, the board finds that the roads, drainage, and other public utilities would not be affected by construction of the additional living space. The board finds that the construction of the additional living space will not contribute to environmental damage. Section eight point four point two point two is not applicable. Section eight point four point two point three, the board finds that the construction of the living space will not adversely affect scenic views from public ways or neighboring properties. Fifteen, National Seashore Park Special Permit Standards and Criteria. One, the board finds that the applicants do not propose any grade changes or removal of native vegetation or soil. The only earth removal proposed is approximately twelve by nineteen foot section where the bedroom addition will be located. There is no native vegetation in this section. Two, the board finds that the applicants do not propose construction on any steep slopes, floodplains, hilltops, dunes, coastal banks, scenic views, or wetlands. The location of the addition does not obstruct any potential water or other scenic views from publicly accessible locations. Three, the board finds there are no unusual or rare natural and or historic features that need preservation. Four, the board finds that the construction of the addition will not impact environmental resources, including groundwater quality and surface water considerations. Five, the board finds that the applicants do not propose any new exterior lighting decks or patios. Six, the board finds that they requested additional two hundred and how much? Two hundred and seven I have here. Is that right?
I think it's two twenty-seven.
Two twenty-seven. The additional two hundred and twenty-seven square feet of floor space would exceed the Cape Cod National Seashore fifty percent gross floor area uh use guideline. In order for the board to grant relief requested by the applicants, the board must find that the development shall not have a significant adverse impact impact on the scenic views or on the prevailing scale, mass, and character of the neighborhood and district. Seven, the board finds that the relief requested by the applicants does not have a significant adverse impact on the scenic views or on the prevailing scale, mass, and character of the neighborhood and the zoning district. And seven, the board finds that the relief requested by the applicants does not um does not, no, I'm sorry. That's it. That's it. I'm done. I'm done. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Questions, changes?
You want to add that the National Seashore has not um weighed in positively or negatively?
There was, there were no appearances or correspondence in support or opposition to the National Seashore Park did not respond.
Right.
Not comment. Yep. Okay. Anything else? Did we get through those numbers? All right, Ben?
You were right on the money.
Thank you. Thank you, Will.
Yeah, I had nothing to do with the numbers out there.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, they were wrong, I think.
They were, they, they were a challenge, yes.
I, 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 I move, we, we, we approve the findings.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
Al seconds. All in favor, Al.
Aye.
Jan.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Trevor.
Aye.
And me, aye. Um, based on the findings, I need an approval of the permit.
Shall move.
I move, and Al seconds. All in favor, Al. Jan.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Trevor.
Aye.
And me, aye. All right, Ben.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's so nice to be, it's so nice to be in front of you on a, on a project that gets the animus vote and no extended discussion. I love it. Thank you.
Nice to have a five thousand square foot home with a, with a three by six and a half foot bathroom.
You have no idea how much space you have, Mr. Buckley.
What have you suggested, an outhouse, too?
That's right. Well, we, we explained to you that, that Janet's great-great-grandmother had an outhouse there.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chris as well. Okay, good night, everybody.
All right, good night. We do have, we do have minutes, folks. Chris, we have minutes, yes? From Chris, you're muted.
I'm not sure of the date.
Uh, would have been May twelfth?
Yeah.
May twelfth.
Yeah.
It's a May twelfth. I need a um motion to accept the minutes from May twelfth, which we had an interesting time trying to get right.
I, I, I move, we approve the minutes of May twelfth.
All right, and I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Andy seconds. All in favor, Al.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Andy.
Aye.
Trevor.
I wasn't there.
Yeah, I know, but you can, you can approve. You can't move her second, but you can approve.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
And Sharon, aye. I don't think we have anything else, right, Chris?
That is it.
What's on the agenda for next session? I'm not, not, are, are there many cases?
Uh, there's one I know of for sure. Is there more than one, Chris?
We have just one for the next session.
Just one for the next session, okay.
Okay, good.
Which is June.
Six, I think.
June what?
Is it six?
Nine.
Nine, June nine.
Second.
June nine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all right.
Very good. All right, and we have to, we have to adjourn. Okay, okay, all, okay, all in favor.
Aye.
Just put your hands up. Aye.
All right.
All right, all right, bye all.
Night.
Night. Thank you, guys. Yes, so we'll have a site visit for that one. So, Chris, I will send that you can stop the recording.
Okay, wait, let me say, let me get into it again. Let's see, I'm trying to wait. Stop recording. There we go.